Trying to watch the news at the most and I looked at it for a minute and said, it's six thirty-four, my computer is in sync. And my clock. I think I forgot I paused. But I started and I never looked at the time. And that's why.
All right, we'll call the January sixth meeting. City Council, in order, please rise from the side sponsored by the Pledge of Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, call.
Councilmember Alexander, here. Councilmember Brandon, here. Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri. Councilmember Stevenson.
There.
Mayor Wong.
Here.
Proven the minutes from the December sixteenth meeting.
Okay. One second.
Okay.
Motion for floor, a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conker.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson. Mayor Wong.
Yes. Other comments or requests? Uh, any town residents or taxpayers have any comments? You are here about something on the agenda, we can discuss that when we get to it. Yeah, sir.
Yeah, hi, um, just, uh, I talked to Katie about possibly presenting to council, uh, just a proposal, uh, that revolved around the Mill Hall pool. So if you don't mind, can I take five minutes just to put this out there now on time? Um. So I think everyone here probably knows that the Mill Hall pool is over fifty-four years old this year. Uh, it is in dire need of renovation. Um, I I serve on the Clinton County Community Advisory Committee with Lock Haven Water. And Jeff Snyder challenged me to go find out what's going on in the pool, so I did. And, uh, one thing led to another and and all of a sudden they got on board. So Tom joined us as the mayor and the three of us, we call ourselves the Dolphins, uh, to put that in the record. Uh, and we have been working on this for about two and a half years now. Uh. We're calling it the Community Pool in Mill Hall Park. Um, and this is Mill Hall's taken on a huge task. Uh, taking this school on because it is the only outdoor pool in this part of Clinton County. I'm not even sure that is the outdoor pool up in Hydras still even operational as anybody else is. So it it satisfies a lot of our clientele and the constituents in this lower part of Clinton County a lot. And, uh, so one of our jobs is to try to raise a matching grant. We did get a non-matching grant, matching points to match the grant that we got from DCNR. But we got a grant for nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars from DCNR. So our goal is to try to match that. Um, Mill Hall has taken on the job. They have, uh, they've got a loan from a bank. Uh, and we've started paying their their Mill Hall's into this for about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars so far for architects fees. Um, the city, not city council, the county commissioners gave us thirty-three thousand dollars, awarded thirty-three thousand dollars for feasibility study. It's in an architect's hands now. The bidding is going to start here in the next two weeks. Uh, we're going to have onsite visits by contractors, uh, but our job and then structure is going to start. Our job is to try to raise the money. So we've been to, um, various businesses, corporations, private donors, and we're hitting the different townships. We've been in Volino Township, we're on Flemington Borough on, uh, Thursday night. And we thought we'd come to Lock Haven City, since you represent the biggest component of the constituents, uh, to see if we can convince you to donate some money to this project. Um.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of people in Lock Haven use the pool. It's used by everybody. And I also encourage at this point, find them from your constituents that they're interested. They can find there's a strong interest in having a pool. Um, but Mill Hall cannot do a lot. It's it's a massive, uh, thing.
They're they're spending about a hundred thousand dollars a year to operate the pool. And lately it's been twenty-five to fifty thousand just to repair it at the start of the, at the start of the season. Cement falls in and it it definitely needs done. Um, so. Uh, what am I going to say next?
It's really important for, you know, kids, in particular. Everybody should learn how to swim. We don't, if we don't have a county pool, kids are not going to learn how to swim. But unfortunately, you know, pay the price for that. And we're a water community. We use the river and use the the lake and all that stuff. So this is really great. Get this full time.
We've talked in presentations where people have actually given his testimonies, what it was like swimming there as children. And I don't know if anybody fits that bill in here, but the testimonials have been very strong, very supportive. Uh. So that's where we are. Um. We don't have, we have numbers in mind, but obviously that's going to be up to you guys. And it's going to be, they give some grant out there on two kids too. You know, the loan is for two years. So throw a number out, you decide you can give us a hundred thousand dollars, you can do fifty thousand, I'm just throwing a number out. If you can get a penny, you can give you five dollars to get a penny.
Does anybody know CPR?
I know, I, I just, I was, I just. Uh. Anything else?
Well, it's competitive pool, that's the other thing we're investing in. You can set records in this pool. You've got to be qualified, be qualified as, therefore, any timing that is done there is acceptable when meets further up through the state process of competition.
Vice President will use it then.
We appreciate the fact that you're entertaining us here this evening. And I, Mill Hall, it's a very, I'm extending you, Mill Hall, for a span for anything that you may donate. It is going to be a real challenge for Mill Hall, for the three of us, to meet that nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, to meet that matching grant. It it, money is really tight. Uh, everybody's aware of that. But if we fail in this project, there will be a pool. It's really something that I think that everybody has to stand up, make the contribution financially, and they did originally, and it was successful then. And I, I'm optimistic that everybody, various communities, will realize how important it is to do this.
Yeah, thank you for your time. Any questions? Have you, any at all?
Thank you. Do you just need letters of support also for any other grant funding you may?
Uh, we might. We're, we're working through, uh, Representative Wardwood's office. We're working with the Department of Conservation Economic Development because there will be that NAP program, you're familiar with that, the credit program. So the private donors are interested in that. Um, but then we're also going to talk to Senator Dush's office. We're going to talk to, uh, G, uh, GT, Tom, GT?
GT.
GT, yeah. Uh, specifically can be some additional grant money available too. Uh, so there might be that need, Steve, yeah.
I just wondered, uh, because it's past our budget time, you understand that, we should have seen you in the fall more than likely, so we could have possibly allocated a rear mark something for, depending on what the resident council thought. Of course, you understand, we do support the city beach and the expense that goes with that and the lifeguards and everything that's there too. So as part of our program that we give to the city people and the county, and anybody can come. And plus, if the county's giving you money, that's our money too. We just give it to the county and they transfer it to you also. But it doesn't mean we can't look at our budget, uh.
Well, we can't, no, without the people on the agenda.
Agenda, I'm just telling you out loud what what I'm thinking. Uh, and, uh, but I applaud you in doing this project. And I, I know past history, I think we certainly signed a letter for the pool to be built originally and to then supported it, but did not help financially because it was that pool up there. I think so. But nowadays, those lines disappear more and more each day, hopefully, the way we work together between municipalities. So let's see what what we can do. We have talked about it on our agenda.
Okay.
Has to be, before we take any action, it has to be official.
I know. And and if this year doesn't work, even maybe if you can just give us an idea of what we might be able to do next year because like Tom said, we have to know that we're reaching some goals here. If not, it's going to get, it's going to get shovelled over. It's going to become just a big question.
First time Mr. Ross and I have worked together on the pool issue of Mill Hall. The fact that Mill Hall Borough Councilman once said that it took a long to go straight to hell as far as he was concerned when I went to speak on behalf of the pool.
He's taking everybody on the next one. Definitely the attitude, Mill Hall Borough, change dramatically.
Absolutely, a lot, a lot of changes up there as far as, uh, the representatives. Just a memory.
Thank you for coming down.
Appreciate it, thank you.
It's a quick perspective, two guys that we put together. I'm only two with you and you can share them and I can get them back from Greg at some point. All right, if you have any questions, you can call us. We're happy with it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time. It's good.
Thank you. Thank you.
The other comments. Okay, we'll move on. Five or four B. Oh, I'm sorry. I did not see that. I put my hand out before you.
Your name and.
I live in the building, I think, and there's a lot of stuff there. I know I talked about briefly last year, two times in the last two years, sending proposals to develop there. Uh, that needed variance, they don't need zoning. Uh, and both times now they're repeated because of a review by the zoning hearing board. Uh, the latest go around, uh, somebody from the city remarked they'd been working with the developer for six months. And so, um, we're requesting that if there's going to be another application for variance there and somebody's working from the city, is working with a developer for months, that perhaps the city and the property owner, contact the neighbors, get them involved early as opposed to working on it for six months, going to zoning hearing board and making it a full or nothing proposition. Maybe we can come to some kind of uh, compromise, as you said in one meeting, uh, and somebody from the commissioner said negotiation. But there wasn't any compromise, there was no negotiation. It was nineteen units the first time, forty units this time. There was no discussion with us. Um, so that's our request. And obviously, if you guys decide to rezone, uh, my request in terms of zoning is, you're going to have planning commission meetings, the city post the time and location of the planning commission meetings so the public can see it ahead of time. Uh, right now, they're not on the city website, so you don't know when they're having meetings. But if you post them there, uh, gives the public the opportunity to go to the meeting and see if it's developed in a plan as it's gone, as opposed to debate cake at the end. So, like I said, it's gone there twice, both times, we were uninvolved, no one communicated with us. It was basically go to the meeting and, uh, uh, go to the meeting and argue against. I think it'd be more productive. I mean, I can see something going in there. I pro, obviously I prefer actually at the school, I kind of like having the school there.
I was saying it out of our hands.
I mean, my wife's a teacher, my mom's a teacher, my uncle's a teacher, so I like having the school around. It it feels good, but obviously that's not an option. But um, you know, the property is going to be developed, let's make it something that is the neighborhood and the neighbors can accept, as opposed to have something that's just pushed out there and we had no say yet at all. So just wanted to say that.
Even when the website is not updated, all legal notices for those meetings are in the paper.
Planning Commission?
Everything, all, all the boards and authorities.
Well.
Planning committees, zoning, I mean, it has to be advertised.
I, I don't get the paper.
Sorry, Van Laak.
What's that?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I mean, uh.
It's proof of publication, we do publicize it.
Understood, but I mean, now it's like a, a funny expedition because it's not regularly scheduled, like the city council meetings, you post them sometimes the week before, particularly today, uh, that's also posted on the doors. So you can see what's going to be discussed at the meeting. Planning Commission, I don't know if they have a regular schedule, it's not.
They do, they do?
Yes, what is it?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but both the zoning hearing board and planning commission meet on specific days every month as business is needed. So it's always going to be like the first Thursday of every month kind of thing. It's going to be one or.
Well, zoning hearing board provides off. Yeah.
It it's scheduled, but they answer it if there's no business.
So. Do they not post it if it's canceled? Uh, you know, they're not communicating, not having a meeting.
No, they would post it on the doors, which is legally required. Which our meeting was canceled.
Uh, same door up here, the city council, agenda.
Uh, I don't know. I don't personally post it, but I know it would be on that door, uh, or I figure how is where I can see it because that's where the public comes into the meeting, but likely on the front door too, because that's usually where it's posted.
That's, that's fine. But is it possible for the city to post on their website, which is more convenient for everybody?
It is possible. Uh. It's obviously much more convenient in this day and age to when's the new website?
Uh, they're working on it this week, so I don't have the launch date, but it's, it's not very sure.
Yeah, our new website will be a little different than what you're used to seeing now. So we're going with a new company and so there'll be more information than there used to be on our website. Um. It's a ton of information is on our website, people that don't have access it, um, through the ways that we have it. Like we have every audit and budget since two thousand and four, I think, on our website, and I still get calls constantly to see the budget, but it's on the website. Same with the minutes. Uh, so I think the new organization of it with this new company, uh, will be easier for you to find those things going forward. I realize they're not on today, but in the future, which we have the new website was being worked on currently, that would be easier, uh, for you to access that information in advance. Uh, I think it's twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting is when the agenda has to be posted.
Yeah, I, I just, I'd be much appreciated if you guys could post there, make a lot easier for those of us that don't touch drive or travel or whatever. Just looking here, uh, that it looks like the express has, uh, all public, uh, all public images available through the database on there. On the website, so. Yeah.
I have four meetings scheduled.
What, the planning commission?
Yeah, this is supposed to be the third Tuesday of each month at seven PM, the floor conference.
Where's that?
This is on the county DA data.
Oh, it's like, oh, county. Uh, was it the county?
Yeah, it's probably county.
County zoning here, I'm sorry, my, I.
I don't understand. If I ask them where it was, they'd refer me to some other person and say, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Right, be a little more transparent or try to figure out a way we can get that out. Um, anyone else? Okay, uh, four B, so this is your request for Lock Haven, with Lock Haven Fire Department.
Uh, Mark Slesnier and Chief Tyler Whitting are both here. And if you guys would like to speak on behalf of this request, they are requesting the use of Petty Park and City Beach, as well as Perry's Alley and a portion of North Vesper Street for a fundraising floating event on August seventeenth from eight to six PM. And on the back you'll see a full description of the event as well. And they're here if you have any questions.
Yeah, great, all right. Uh, my name's Mark Slesnier, uh, gentleman from Mill Hall, either the Cobra Dolphins, you can call me the Shark. What do you do, bud? Uh, I'm, uh, one of the owners of Slesnier Communications. Uh, the owner and operator radio group throughout San Antonio, San Francisco, Indiana. Uh, at Slesnier Communications, I believe strongly in serving the community. Uh, one of the best ways to do that is to serve organizations, uh, that also serve the community. Um, and with that, uh, last week, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Tyler Whitting and I got together to discuss an idea, and this has actually been a promotional, um, idea that I've had actually for quite a few number of years. I spoke with Mayor Wong a couple of occasions, uh, about the possibility of the idea, and now the timing seems right. So our idea is to partner with the fire departments of Lock Haven, uh, not only as fundraising effort, but also to, uh, draw awareness and raise awareness as to what fire departments are, what they do, who they serve, uh, what they're all about. And also, um, in addition to funding, help out with, uh, future, uh, improvements too. Um, the conversation that Tyler and I had, uh, we had, uh, went over a variety of topics. There's a lot of moving parts to the idea. Uh, but what you said is pretty much the idea. Uh, we'd like to use our local natural, uh, resource, the Southland River, to do a float. That would be like a tube float or a raft float, uh, similar to what was done, uh, and started years ago, uh, in Lycoming County. Um, we'd probably call it something along the lines of the Lock Haven Fire Float. Uh, something like that would be able to utilize fire departments, uh, their water, uh, safety apparatus and so forth. Uh, you know, to help out with the float. The idea would be, uh, to not only, uh, create excitement here in the city of Lock Haven, but also bring people in, uh, from out of town. Hopefully this would be an event that once we, uh, do it, uh, would be something that, uh, everybody would see fit to possibly do on an annual basis. And I think it's something that could, uh, could grow and 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 again, there's a lot of moving parts and I believe a lot of, uh, organizations locally, uh, and including the city of Lock Haven, you have benefit. You know, for, um, Tyler's here as well. I know he has some things to say, uh, but if anybody has some questions, you can get the bridge.
It's in fire.
Yeah. I didn't work that into.
Anybody have any questions for more, Tyler?
I think he's right. There's a lot of logistics that's going to go into it, clear out a path to the river and and then getting everything out and up over the bank. And it's a pretty ambitious project, but I think it's, it's a go. I mean, I think it's possible to do it. Yeah, I hope you're successful on it.
Oh, when, actually, when I brought that, I did speak with Jim Watson. And we were trying to figure out the best place to enter the river upstream, uh, a couple of different locations that were brought up. Uh, we were trying to consider distance and also the ability to, uh, you know, to enter the river. And from what Joe says, from what I understand, at Petty Park, uh, the bank isn't as steep as other possible places, uh, may be, however risky vegetation, uh, I guess between the water and the cleared area, that would be, uh, figured out to make the, you know, to make a path for whatever best people could get into the river. So I have no idea how long it takes to float from there. Um, probably get out there, something, do a trial run. Seem like, uh, that's probably about the best distance made of you know, event and not be too hard.
I mean, my right to assume that the fire department had the equipment to do the clearing and stuff is needed for this?
Well, uh, we'd have to go up there, we'll get it obviously, see what's involved. But I plan to reach out to all of the works if it's not something the fire department can do that could help us out with that.
Mark's right. We, you and I have discussed it for a couple of years now. Because it's a fantastic, um, idea, uh, to benefit our fire department. We, we know we can only afford that dollars to them and and fundraise for them and create a nice event to bring us, that is for.
And yes, you have to have their rescue water craft and personnel deployed out. But not only does that help with the safety of participants, but also advertise the fact that we do that. Because when I went on, I turned to the fire department. Citizens is the only certified water resident in our county?
They were at one.
They were at one point. So it's, it's a great thing to know that we have that in our area, because we refer to making that to the mission.
Do I have a motion?
Is this, is this, um, this Eastside Fire Rescue or is this all fire drugs, Lock Haven?
This will be citizens' homes and Eastside.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I want to make sure we do is because the is on that end of Vesper Street that we make sure we communicate regularly with the, with the people that live there because those are rentals, every several of them are rentals. So they're, if they're going to have access to their parking or not, uh, if we're going to block that road off, we have to make sure they, we make accommodation for them somewhere there. Right, and that's in our plan, uh, we didn't want to get really detailed tonight. But yes, we send out certified letters to all residents in the affected area, make sure they're aware. And if they have any questions, they can call me or more.
Anything else?
Ah, thank you.
Anyone else have any question?
I will.
You have, yeah.
I will just note that this will be first reading because it does involve the closure of North Vesper Street and Perry's Alley.
Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion for floor and a second. Any further questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Wong.
Yes. Thank you for thinking outside the box.
Thank you for considering.
Okay, uh, four C, closure of North Vesper, Vesper from East Main to Jordan's Alley uh, June twenty-eighth. Uncle Alberts.
Uncle Alberts and Mark Kachner are requesting the closure of North Vesper Street from Main Street to Jordan's Alley on June twenty-eighth from eight AM to eight PM for their Pride in the Haven event. This event was previously held in Triangle Park, but they have outrun the area. Um, so this will be the same event, just in a new location, uh, with vendors, entertainment, um, good stuff. And this will be the first reading as well.
Sure. Anybody have questions? Do I have a motion?
Oh my God.
Motion for floor and a second. Any questions or comments about the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yeah. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Wong.
Yes. Uh, four D, use of Zindel Park on September sixth.
Uh, Revive Gear or Outdoors is requesting the use of Zindel Park on September sixth from ten AM to one PM for a trail run. Uh, this course will begin at the end of the Dirty Divers Pavilion and follow a five K trail course through Zindel Park. This is free for all participants and a group will work with them to ensure that paperwork and permits are completed. I did hand out, um, their route prior to the meeting.
Which county?
Move the event.
Motion for floor, a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Wong.
Yes. Anything else under, uh, request?
I have, excuse me, I have nothing.
I'm finished with this five A, considering entering into an agreement for the purchase of
Powell Holdings and parcel by an A MAX. The two parcels, each one contains one of the high production supplemental water wells the city will need to bring online in order to complete the project in Keller Dan. Funds to purchase these properties will need to be secured through a Pennvest borrowing, which will also be needed to fund a young Dan or well through the pipeline permanent installation. Powell Holdings is approximately twelve acres more or less. The purchase price of reading two is four hundred thousand dollars. MAX is eleven acres more or less, or two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The Pennvest funding will also need to pay off the city's twenty twenty-two C note, which has been used as interim financing for the levels in pipeline and was also used partially for the emergency water supply for twenty-three and twenty-four. The city's note matures at April first, for a total balance of one point seven million in principal and an additional hundred thousand dollars in interest due by that date. And so we will be looking to Pennvest for that funding along with the funding to purchase Powell Holdings.
What's which council?
I'm going to agree.
Second.
Motion for floor and a second. Questions or comments on the motion? Off of the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Any other unfinished business?
I run here.
New business six A, notice Keystone Central School District on its tax office.
Oh, missed it, I shouldn't have said no.
Not a voting thing, but it's.
Just so that the minutes reflect that the city did receive thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars ninety-six cents in December as part of the distribution of the opioid misuse and addiction debate across.
Landor was the only one that visited. Thank you for the update on that, now new business source in the Keystone Central School District tax office.
The Keystone Central School District held its regular meeting on December twelfth, actually, I believe it had a postponed meeting, because whether it went out on December twelfth, the board did vote to end its agreement as soon as feasible for being the subcontractor for the Clinton County Tax Collection Committee to collect earned income tax. Uh, with that, the tax collection committee meets on January twenty-second and will go out for request for proposals for subcontractors to do that, uh, previously looking into that for timer and Keystone Collection groups. So, um, we're interested in that and the tax office of Keystone Central is also the city subcontractor uh, for business privilege tax and local services tax. So as part of that, I will request on behalf of the city that each of those contractors provide a rate so the council can compare having the collection done by that subcontractor and how much that would cost compared to keeping that business split Keystone Central.
Six B, point three five million tax form.
This is annually filed fifteenth of January, and this shows the city's mileage, well as other taxes that are collected through D C D, so it's provided for council members and the public's inclusion.
Six C, authorization to solicit for bids for Sunset High in phase two, how many phases are there, mind me, there are lots of them.
There will be eventually, I believe, seven, because Henlock had to be split into two. But, uh, that's because four hundred thousand doesn't go as far as it used to, um, but Henlock is the next stretch. And there is, uh, water line that I believe serves three households that suburban has been requested to relocate. And the engineers have completed all of the documents necessary to go out to bid for that. So that should go out with council's approval beginning next week, uh, but we should have some pretty solid bids back. We do have estimate, which is, um, on the set aside, towards that estimate is in the city's liquid fuels budget.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Questions on the mode? Off the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes, councilmember Brandon, yes, councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
No, I think by the time we finish that, we're gonna start all over by getting it again.
It's something we've never done before, so this would be nice.
Uh, six D, December sixth, point twenty-four sewage compliance inspection report.
Uh, last year we started to provide these to the city council, so you could see, uh, the good work that is done by, uh, people in the wastewater treatment facility, uh, the city of Lock Haven Sewer System uh, was inspected again and by D N P. And we are in compliance with our permitted nitrogen and phosphorus annual mass loads for the year twenty twenty-four.
Six E, discussion regarding elected official compensation.
This is something that traditionally comes up about every other year, but we haven't really discussed it in a while, no member of council is required to make any statement about this proceeding. But I wanted to provide council information. There are the third class C code, council had the ability to examine and set the wages for future city elected officials. Any changes to those rates will only be for council members starting their term in twenty twenty-six or later and the mayor's starting a term in twenty twenty-eight. Uh, when set in nineteen seventy-eight, the annual salary for the mayor was eighteen hundred dollars and for a council member was twelve hundred. Adjusted for inflation, that's equivalent to nine thousand today for the mayor and six thousand for council members. Council members, uh, in twenty thirteen adjusted the wage to be mayor forty-eight hundred dollars and council member thirty-six hundred dollars, again adjusted for inflation. The mayor today would be about sixty-five hundred dollars and forty-nine hundred four. Okay, with council member, so council has the opportunity to discuss whether or not it would be interested in making changes, obviously we'll not do that tonight, but can ask that it be put on a future agenda. It would have to be adopted no later than March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five to take effect. Because under the third class C code, of all days, that has to be adopted before two days of the last day fixed by law for candidates to withdraw their names from nominated petition. So.
Right, the intention is that anyone that would be interested in running for these seats deserve to know what compensation you expect for side to do that. Yeah, it's not, you wouldn't be voting on a race for yourself, it's for who? But get elected down the road here, right?
It would have, obviously no impact on the twenty twenty-five budget, because it wouldn't take effect until ever early as twenty twenty-six. Only then for three council members.
Right.
Uh, the mayor and four council members, it wouldn't have an impact on until the twenty twenty-eight budget. But if you would like that, put it on the agenda, we can do that.
Awesome.
If it's not on the agenda, does it just care, automatically carry over with the rate that it's at?
Yes.
I think you had your answer.
It is my due diligence.
Oh, we did. Any other new business? And we have the F I reports. How much, um, this number?
We, um, do have the privilege of being the host at the town gown meeting, uh, which has been going sometimes at the county building, sometimes at the university. And so the city will be hosting that on January eighth from the ten. And so, uh, hopefully that brings together the same rowdy group it does and people are able to share information.
Anybody have anything from their committees or boards that they serve on?
I will not be able to attend the, uh, Water Protection Authority meeting, uh, I have a conflict and, uh, I'll be able to lose a conflict at least till that evening, so on that day I will lose, my following meetings will all would fall on the same day and as the Water Protection Authority, so I'll lose those, but I won't be able to do that till that first. That's the third Thursday.
I, I should be able to be there.
After a month.
You should try to go.
I believe it will take place after city council meets on the twentieth, and on the twentieth you'll be appointing representatives to your authorities for the commission. Okay, and so you should have at least one other individual besides, uh, complement of the conflict. Uh, that will be appointed on that.
What happened else? So anyone have anything else to report council seat?